Do you have somewhere on vacation, Fund?
He's in Washington for a SHRM.
For what?
SHRM is Human Resources.
Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The Village will met. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. We'll call the matters in the order in which they appear in the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door. So you may want to have one so you can follow on and see when your matter will be called. Now, if you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. From those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available in hard copy form at Village Hall and also on our website at willmet.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet. And if you look up, you can actually see the cameras in the corner, so the little red light indicates which camera is active. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings at willmet.com. And I'd like to personally thank all residents who tune in regularly to follow the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on our website on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the Board members receive. This week's packet contained 278 pages. We now review them electronically, and I read them on my iPad. And we've had an opportunity to review all of this information, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points that you'd really like us to focus on in our deliberations. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here.
So we have a quorum tonight. As many of you know, Trustee Leonard resigned due to work conflicts and basically not being able to live in Willmet anymore, so we do have a vacancy currently on the Board. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. During Public Comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on a matter which is not on the agenda tonight. Members of the audience may address the Board on matters which are on tonight's agenda when that particular matter is called. So is there any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Right. I'll come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Nectow. I'm a friend of a property owner in Willmet. He asked me to speak for and on behalf. He's out of town, and it concerns a matter concerning the property, a 2122 Old Glenview Road, which is a matter in litigation with the Village of Willmet. And he asked me to bring forth the fact that the litigation is going on trial on May 8 of 2018. Village filed for a motion of judgment which was denied by the court on January 18, and the judge found that the village position was not adequate to grant that motion. And the purpose of the owner asking for this information to be transmitted to the Village Board is the fact to try to resolve this matter, not going into trial, and to come up with a solution. We were told by the attorneys in the matter that the village would not want to resolve this out of court. They wanted to go to trial. And this is something that the owner wanted me to convey to the Village Board, that excess of $350,000 has been paid by the Board for legal fees for defending the position here, which is somewhat very high legal fees for this matter. And the purpose here is to try to bring this to a litigation to an end, and that's why I'm here, to ask the Board to do this and to consider resolving the situation rather than going to trial.
So, Mr. Stein, would you like to respond, or would you prefer I respond?
Well, I can give a brief response, but I'm sure that you will.
Okay, go ahead.
But just so you know, the village did consider the position.
I mean?
The village did consider the position made by your neighbor or your friend, the owner of the property, and it essentially has been rejected. Understanding this has been 10 years of litigation.
Right.
And the village is the defendant, not the plaintiff. We didn't cause this litigation. We have reached out to them with a settlement offer in the past, which has been unanimously denied by them, by the plaintiffs. So it's important to understand that, I know you come here today with the one side of the facts, but the truth is, we attempted to work this matter out. We're not going to just as simply capitulate, because it does not meet our codes, does not meet our ordinances, and that's been our position.
Mr. Mayor, is there any? Yeah, no, and the Board did discuss this matter in closed session and, you know, directed the attorneys and the staff in that way.
Right.
So our understanding, just for clarity, is that your friend's position is, let us do what we want, and then we'll drop our case.
Well, it's not clear on that basis, because all the positions taken by the village for this motion summary judgment were denied by the court because the facts brought by the village were not true.
Right. Mr. Stein, actually, you want to respond?
Yeah, I can respond. What a motion for summary judgment. A motion for summary judgment means that there's no material fact, and it's basis on law. The judge found that there's two competing sets of facts, our experts and your client. Therefore, the judge, his hands are tied, and he can't find for summary judgment and has to go to trial to weigh the facts. But he did say to the defendants, please remember that you, the defendants, have a very high burden that you have to meet. I'm sorry, to the plaintiffs, I'm sorry. That you, the plaintiffs, have a very high burden to meet. So that's pretty good position, I think, for the defendants in this matter, meaning us.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Nectow, you mentioned that you're a neighbor. Are you a Willmet resident?
No, I'm not a neighbor. I didn't say I was a friend of the owner.
You said you were a friend and neighbor. You are not. Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Drucker, welcome.
Hi, I'm Beth Drucker, and I live at 2500 Greenwood Avenue. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the Board of Go Green Willmet, and we want to thank the Village of Willmet for co-sponsoring Going Green Matters. That's the environmental fair that we had this past Sunday at the Michigan Shores Club. It was our 12th annual, and we really appreciate the cooperation that we always get from the village. The police help us make sure it's safe for everyone. The Park District helps us. The staff of the Michigan Shores, which is one of Willmet's loveliest venues, is terrific. We had more than 1,400 people participating. They came here from probably about 18 different communities, and it was a chance for Willmet to really shine and to share our community with so many people. We've ended with a celebration at a local business, which was great, at the Willmet Wine Cellar, and I just wanted to say, we've gotten a lot of feedback from people from other communities who really appreciated what we offer here from Willmet, and it's great to get the support and the sponsorship of the village. So I wanted to thank, go on record as thanking you for that cooperation.
Yeah, and I also, you know, a number of us were there.
Oh, yeah.
At it, as well as the village represented. And it really is quite amazing how the event has grown. And I do agree with you that Willmet looks very good hosting an event like that and having residents that organize events. And I can't even imagine, you know, it sort of goes off without a hitch, and all these people show up, but I can't even imagine the amount of work that you and your colleagues on the Board put into that event, because it really is, it really is a special event. It's just a great resource for everyone, not just our community, but other communities as well. And some of the folks that, you know, I talked to there who were from other communities but were at booths and stuff were just, you know, just, "This is so amazing," is what basically their general response.
Great. And shout out to John Adler, who is generally our point person, helping us get that organized. But it's a really great time when the whole community works together for a common purpose. So, thank you. The construction of the parking lot at the Park District Swim Beach is going to make next year's event a little complicated, but we'll work on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on a matter which is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. So all items that begin with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda tonight, and that means if you start on Page 1, Item 3.1, all the items on Page 2, and then the first item on Page 3, which is Item 3.1.4. So items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight, and if an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, it will be approved, and it will not be discussed. So let me begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Okay? I will move on to ask if there's any trustees who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda. Okay? May I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries. The Consent Agenda has been adopted, so if you're here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it has been approved. And I'll clarify for people tonight, again, all items beginning with 3 have been approved, and that includes land use Item 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5. And also, I would like to highlight Item 3.1.4, which is on the Judiciary Committee's report. That is an ordinance that amends the village code to increase the age to purchase tobacco products to 21 years of age, and that was just approved. So for those of you, I believe there's some people that are here tonight on that one, and I just wanted to clarify that indeed that was just approved by the Village Board. And Trustee Plunkett, I mean, you know, when we go to Report of Officers, if you'd like to say something on that, because I know this was, this was one of your, you sort of were very much a champion of that ordinance, I'll give you some time then, if you'd like. Okay, so there will be no further discussion of any of the items on the Consent Agenda. So if you are here for that, you're more than free, you're free to leave. You're more than free to stay for the rest of the meeting. Now, if you are leaving, especially visitors who are here, we have a really nice downtown. Please stop by one of our restaurants on your way out of town. Okay, next is Report of Officers, and I need my glasses for this. So Item 4.1 is proclamation designated 2018 as National Fair Housing Month. And I'm going to get the proclamation up on my iPad right now. Okay, so the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Village of Willmet finds that decent, safe, and affordable housing is part of the American dream and a goal of all Illinois residents, and whereas April 11, 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas individuals have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, gender, familial status, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, and/or disability, and whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness, and whereas federal and state laws affirm the right of every person to equal housing opportunity, and whereas fair housing is a positive community good, and whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity, and whereas stable, integrated, and balanced residential patterns are threatened by discriminatory acts and unlawful housing practices that result in segregation of residents and opportunities in our region, and whereas the talents of grassroots and nonprofit organizations, housing service providers, financial institutions, elected officials, state agencies, and others must be combined to promote and preserve fair housing and equal opportunity. Now, therefore, I, Robert T. Blinsky, President of the Village of Willmet, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as National Fair Housing Month in the Village of Willmet, and proclaim Willmet as an open and inclusive community committed to equal housing opportunities for existing and prospective residents. Moving on, Trustee Plunkett, if you'd like to say anything on Item 3.1.4, I yield the floor to you right now for my report.
Okay, great. Well, tonight, Willmet just raised the age to sell tobacco products to minors to 21 from 18, and Willmet joins 14 other communities in Illinois, including Chicago, Evanston, and Highland Park in doing so. Thank you to Mr. Praesner for the research and Mr. Stein for drafting the ordinance. Studies have shown that 25% of tobacco users are less than 18, and that 90% of those who provide tobacco to kids are under 21. So this could have a meaningful impact. And when we say tobacco, we also include vaping products that contain nicotine that have become the discussion these days. So with this, hopefully, Willmet can join the communities that have done this and make an impact. Right now, there is legislation in the state to also raise the age to 21, which would be wonderful, but in the meantime, I would encourage our neighboring communities to join us. I can say that we had no pushback, we only had support, and this might have been one of the easiest things that the Village Board has handled over the last couple of years. So, thank you to all those who have helped support this.
Thank you, Trustee Plunkett. We'll move on to a report from our Village Manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Our next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
One thing probably appropriate here, our next Board meeting is scheduled for two weeks from today. We may be quorum-challenged at that meeting as it is spring break, so there is a possibility that that meeting will be canceled, and I'll just let people know that now. We would send out a press release if we did cancel the meeting, that's right? Yes. Okay. Very good. Moving on, next item is Item 5, the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there's no report tonight, so move on to our Standing Committee reports. First up is Land Use Committee. In Trustee Leonard's absence, Trustee Sullivan, do you want to play Land Use Chairman Pro Tem? I guess that might be the appropriate term.
There were four items that were approved on consent. No other items.
Next is the Finance Committee, which I think is also Trustee Sullivan.
Both items were approved on consent.
Okay, the Administration Committee is Trustee Dodd.
All items were covered on consent.
And Municipal Services, Trustee Wolf.
We have this evening a report from Stantec regarding the stormwater action plan.
So welcome up either Mr. Johnson or Ms. Berger, whoever's. Welcome back.
Thank you, and thank you, trustees, for, again, giving me the opportunity to present to you. Again, my name is Joe Johnson with Stantec. My objective tonight is really to be brief, but there were some questions that were raised as a follow-up to the previous Open House and previous discussions, and so Village Staff had asked us to try to go through and prepare some brief answers to some of those questions to just help continue to inform your discussion. So I'll go through a few slides to try to answer those questions, and then, again, obviously be happy to provide explanation as we go through those items for you.
Yeah, I do want to clarify that many of these questions, you know, have been raised before the Board. These are not new questions for the Board, but given that there were several questions raised by residents, we want to reiterate sort of the information that we already had for the benefit of residents that asked the questions.
Very good. Thank you. So the first, and we've grouped the questions under categories, if you will. There were several questions that were, that have been raised over the past couple of months about the role of green infrastructure as part of the overall stormwater plan and how it had been considered. So we wanted to touch on a few items there. First of all, I do want to start by saying there was a significant portion of the 2015 Burke Report that was the original stormwater evaluation report that did talk about green infrastructure alternatives. We've drawn on that material and then supplemented that briefly, but a few of the key points, green stormwater infrastructure certainly can reduce the volume and peak rate of runoff from storm events, so that's a good thing. What's important to understand is that the ability of these practices to reduce the volume of runoff depends to a large degree on how much water the soil can infiltrate. We can't magically make the stormwater disappear, but green infrastructure typically provides an opportunity for water to infiltrate into the ground. In this area, we are challenged to some degree with some relatively heavy clay soils that in some parts of the village limit the ability that we can infiltrate, so that's a constraint we have to work around. But that does, again, does not mean that green infrastructure is not on the table. It just means we need to be aware of that constraint. The ability of green measures to reduce the peak rate of runoff typically depends on the storage capacity of these systems. We reduce the peak by holding water back and releasing it downstream more slowly. So the more storage that a measure provides, the more reduction in peak flow we can get downstream. Typically, green infrastructure is more effective for smaller and frequent rain events, and that's in part because they rely heavily on the ability of the ground to infiltrate water. If we have relatively small events, there are many places where green infrastructure's been shown to basically eliminate runoff from frequent events and allow that water to absorb into the ground, to remove pollutants. Those are very positive benefits. When we get very intense storms, where we have several inches of rain in a period of an hour or two hours, then the ability of these systems to infiltrate the water becomes limited, and their overall effectiveness for those really intense storms is somewhat limited. So we have to consider that. Just quickly, the way that some green measures have been considered in looking at the stormwater issues in Willmet, again, in the Burke Report, one example, there was an analysis done to say, what if we put a 10-foot-by-20-foot rain garden on every residential property in West Willmet? So a rain garden is basically a small plot of land where water is directed from the surface, and typically, water plants that function well in wet environments are planted there, and the intent is to try to infiltrate some of that water so it does not run off as quickly. The analysis that was done in 2015 found that if we put those rain gardens everywhere, which would be a very, have a positive benefit in a lot of ways, for the 10-year design event that we're looking for in terms of our projects, it would result in about a .2 foot or about a 3, 4-inch, 3-inch reduction in water levels in terms of flooding levels. So have some impact, but a relatively modest impact in terms of the degree of flooding, and that would translate into a relatively modest change in the size of the gray infrastructure required to still meet our design objective. A second measure that's been discussed is permeable pavement. There are materials now, excuse me, that are being used to pave streets and parking lots that are designed to allow water to actually percolate through that paving material into the subsurface. There are a couple of details on this slide that show either permeable asphalt or permeable concrete sections. What's important is that typically in these systems, there is a granular or gravel bed beneath the permeable paving material that provides storage for the water that percolates through the pavement, and then ideally, that water then percolates into the ground beneath that. Again, depending on the characteristics of the subgrade, we may be able to percolate a lot of water in sandy soils. On very heavy clay soils, we can only percolate a little bit, and the primary benefit is the storage that's provided in the stone. So as an example, we took a block of residential street in Willmet and said, if we were to repave the pavement for that block, we could provide about 38,500 gallons of storage in the storage area under the pavement, and that's significant. It's about 0.12 acre-feet. And again, that's not insignificant, but for the projects that we're looking at, we need to provide on the order of 55 acre-feet across West Willmet to store all of the runoff from the 10-year storm and meet our design objective. So while it is valuable, it's a very small incremental part of that in terms of the benefit. Another way to look at this is, we looked at the sewer expansion option, what we've been calling Option 1, that involves about 44,000 feet of new storm sewer, and we said if we take off the state routes, the county routes, the arterials, perhaps about 60% of the streets impacted by that project could be repaved with permeable pavement. We're going to tear those streets up to put sewers in. We could put permeable pavement back as we do that and create some storage capacity. When we did that, we calculated that that storage volume would be about 5 acre-feet. So it's about 10% of the storage that's needed for the 10-year storm event, and that would provide about a 6-inch reduction in flood levels across the area. So again, it's certainly not a bad thing, but in terms of a silver bullet, if you will, that would eliminate the need for the gray infrastructure, it's a complement as opposed to a replacement for that type of work. This is just a map of that alternative. The areas that are highlighted in blue here are the segments of sewer where we assume that it would potentially be possible to repave a street with permeable pavement. The reduction in the size of the sewers, if we were trying to achieve the same level of protection, would save us about $5 million overall, based on reduced size of sewers. So we'd be able to reduce the sewer size because we're storing some of that water. There is, there is an incremental increase that would likely occur in the cost of repaving the streets. In general, permeable pavement is slightly more expensive than traditional paving materials, and there is a little bit of concern, most of the applications that were being seen right now for permeable pavement tend to be in parking lots and parking lanes and not full-width pavement for certainly heavily traveled streets. Now, Kenilworth has put in a green street where they've done full-width permeable pavement, and there are some experiments going on in that area, but the jury is still a little bit out in terms of the long-term durability of permeable pavements used for full-width The other green infrastructure measure that we were asked to look at was Parkway Bio Swales. So this, if you will, the less glorious name for this would be roadside swales. I don't want to call them ditches. They're engineered as more of a landscape swale, but it is a low spot along the side of the road. Typically, there would be a curb cut provided where water that runs down a curb could then flow into this swale, this low-lying area, and try to infiltrate into the ground or certainly be detained before it goes into the storm sewer. And then as that area fills up, usually there is either an underdrain or a relief inlet that would then take that water to the storm sewer. So again, it is an effective measure for detaining and promoting infiltration of storm water. But again, its potential for volume reduction depends on the soils, and its siting is constrained a little bit by the Parkway and what's the nature of the Parkway. And we thought the best way to illustrate that would be to look at an example. So this is a section of Washington Avenue between, along Pinecrest and Willmet Avenue, so the eastern part of West Willmet, if you will. And so these, this drawing shows elevation contours, and what's important about this block is if you look at the segment from Washington west of Pinecrest, you see that there's a relatively steady slope down that segment of the street, and then when you get past the intersection with Willmet, you see these contours with the dashed lines on. That's a low spot, so that's a low-lying or sag area that would certainly be prone to flooding. And so we looked at this example and said, could we put bio swales in the Parkway in the sloping part of the street to detain the water and alleviate some of the flooding in the low-lying area? And so when we did that and zoomed in on that area, so now this is an aerial of that same section of street and then a view looking down the street, what becomes evident, at least in this area, is we have lots of driveways coming out to the street. We have a number of Parkway trees, and probably not as many Parkway trees perhaps in this block as in some other blocks of Willmet, but that limits our ability to create those swales. So in this, there are some, there are about half a dozen locations where we've shown some little 20-foot rectangles where there's potentially enough space that a bio swale could be put in. So again, the takeaway here is that these can go in, they can be part of an overall plan, but our ability to put bio swales in at the extent that we need to be required to dramatically change flooding for a 10-year event is limited by the, really by the character of the parkways. And with these bio swales, in this type of area, those swales for this block would probably run in the range of $35,000 to $50,000 per block, and would provide some reduction in flow for that right-of-way area. So in summary, on the green infrastructure, green infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure certainly can complement the traditional improvements that we recommend for stormwater, but generally, they can't be a replacement when we're looking at intense events that cause, contribute to severe flooding in the streets or flooding of structures. Widespread implementation of them in the right-of-way does require careful evaluation of siting constraints, whether the soil's in a particular block, what maintenance is required. Typically, these are facilities that require a bit of tending from a, more of a gardening and a green perspective than just mowing the grass. And so there is a different approach that's required to maintain these, as well as durability and public acceptance. Are residents willing to have, for example, bio swales in the parkways along their block? And in general, the takeaway from this is that certainly with an investment of, say, an additional 5% to any of these given alternatives, the village could implement a significant amount of green infrastructure in conjunction. amount of green infrastructure in conjunction with this project. However, we would see that as, if you will, icing on the cake. It's additional improvements that would complement the other work that's being done, potentially increase the level of service that's provided a little bit, but would not dramatically change the order of magnitude of costs that have been presented for the gray infrastructure. So, maybe I'll stop right there first on this issue and see if there are any questions relative to green infrastructure.
Just, this presentation is included in the agenda pack, so people can pull this up on the Internet if they want a copy of it.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of questions. Any idea at this point what type of plants you would put in there, because there's a big difference between turf grass and something like a prairie plant with deeper roots that can actually penetrate clay and improve percolation?
Absolutely, and I will tell you that as an engineer, I would turn to my compatriots that are landscape architects or planters to come up with a planting list, because you're absolutely right. The ability of these systems to function and be maintained depends to a large degree on selecting the right plants up front.
Yeah, and you know, I was able to attend the Go Green Illinois meeting along with Beth Drucker this afternoon, which was amazing. They had some great speakers, including a landscape architect who has designed a number of bioswales, and one thing I was asking was about maintenance, and they said that the best practice is to have the installer recommend a maintenance plan so that you know upfront what you'll be looking at for maintenance, because as Ms. Berger always says, any asset you have has to be maintained.
Absolutely.
So, that sounds like a good plan. The other thing is, and this may not be something that's known at this point, you're saying an additional 5% investment could support green infrastructure. Any idea what percentage of stormwater or what percentage that would add to what is being considered?
In terms of the level of protection or offset?
Exactly.
You know, I think it's, I would say at this point, it's probably about an even proposition. I would say an investment of that level, you could potentially get savings, as we showed, for example, with the permeable pavement. If we were able to do permeable pavement over all those streets and be comfortable that it would be durable for the duration of its normal life, we could probably achieve roughly a 5% savings in terms of the gray infrastructure. So, I think the point is, there is a level of green infrastructure that could probably be done incorporated into the project without dramatically increasing the cost of the project. It would have benefits, but at the same time, that's on the order of 5%. It's not that we could implement green infrastructure and say, we're going to replace 50% of the gray with green.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, good. Just moving forward...
We will have an opportunity for public comment.
So, the second set of questions that was raised came out of the phasing discussion that we presented at the last meeting in terms of the timing of projects, and in particular, what we've called the hybrid option that includes conveyance improvements plus some storage, and there were some questions asked about potential variations to that. So, we've put together a couple of these, and the intent here is not to complicate your task by adding new alternatives, it's to try to provide a couple more data points that help define the alternatives that are up for consideration. So, if you recall, the hybrid option that we've talked about before, we've called sewer expansion plus neighborhood storage, includes a neighborhood storage project in the Kenilworth Gardens area, and then conveyance improvements from the pump station back generally along Willmet Avenue through kind of the southern part of the western side of Willmet. And that project had a cost in the range of 70 to 80 million dollars and provided not quite the same level of protection as the full conveyance alternative, but still relatively high protection. So, the variations that were considered were really two. One was to kind of, if you will, flip that project around and say, if instead of just having one storage facility and adding conveyance to it, what if we did Alternative 3, the neighborhood storage projects with all three storage facilities, how much conveyance would we have to add to that to get to our 10-year level of protection, to make the level of protection equivalent to our Alternative 1? And the cost here, you see, is 85 to 100 million dollars, is basically in the range, a little bit higher than Alternative 1. I think that's consistent with something we've kind of talked with the board about before, is that to provide 10-year protection consistently across the full west side, the conveyance option is really the most cost-effective alternative for doing that. This option achieves similar results at a slightly higher cost, so it's a variation on that, but doesn't really reduce the cost. The second variation came out of a discussion about how to potentially provide a higher level of protection, and the question was, if we did the neighborhood storage projects and then put in more conveyance or larger conveyance, basically the full combination of Alternative 3-in-1, what would that get us? And a previous analysis of that had said that that would get us to maybe about a 25-to-50-year level of protection if we combined all the conveyance and all the storage, and the estimated cost on that is in the 120, 135 million dollar range. If you recall, there was another option, not talking about here, but that talked about 100-year protection, that again, had a much higher cost than either of these. But just briefly, kind of looking at these two hybrids, so this map before you, I'm sorry, lots of colors on here, but the easiest way to parse this is to look for the neighborhood storage project. So, there are the three storage projects, again, in Thornwood Park, Centennial Park, and Hibbard Park that make up the neighborhood storage alternative, and then we've complemented that with conveyance improvements to come back and pick up the other areas that are not served directly by the neighborhood storage alternative. So, it is a blend, if you will, of conveyance and storage, could be phased, we've broken it out into seven phases, it could be broken up over a period of time, and again, we've talked about the cost of the 85 to 100 million dollars. Presenting that with one of the charts that we looked at last time, this is the phasing schedule for implementation of that program over 20 years. And again, this would provide 10-year protection equivalent to the other alternatives, slightly higher cost than Alternative 1 that's been presented. The second variation we talked about was really combining the full conveyance alternative, which is a top graphic in this slide, with the full neighborhood storage alternative, which is the bottom. And there's a little bit of overlap along Hunter Road and along Glenview Road, but basically, this would combine both of those projects, would provide greater than a 25-year level of protection. Could be, the way we've presented it, would be with phased implementation of the neighborhood storage improvements, followed then by the conveyance improvements, and a total cost of about 120 to 135 million dollars, and that cost is a little bit less than the sum of Alternative 1 and Alternative 3, because there is some duplication of a few sewers. So, there are some sewers that are in both. We obviously wouldn't build two of them, we'd just build one in those locations, but again, provides a point of reference. And then, this is a phasing schedule for that, spread out over 30 years. So, this scheme looks at implementing the neighborhood storage improvements, all three storage facilities pretty aggressively over a five-year period of time. So, by 2022, we get those improvements in place, and then you see the benefits kind of plateau for a while as we go back and then start building the conveyance improvements and working our way back across the system.
Right, and the reason it plateaus for so long is sort of the first two phases or so of the conveyance project is really connecting the problem to the pump station, and there's no problem solved while you're connecting it.
That is correct.
And then, you have to do more work to actually solve the problem and then connect it to the stormwater.
That is correct. The other thing that I guess I want to make clear here is that the way we presented it, the total number of properties and structures presented is the total number that are affected by the 10-year storm. So, this project would be comparable to Alternative 1 in terms of providing protection to virtually all of the properties in West Willmet that are affected by a 10-year storm. Obviously, this project actually provides a higher level of protection, provides a 25-year level of protection. We haven't reworked the numbers in terms of numbers of properties, we tried to keep everything consistent, but that's why the cost of this option is higher, because we've raised the level of protection that it provides.
Right, and that's one thing that sort of came out of all of our discussions, is if you want more protection, it costs more. There is no, oh, we forgot this alternative, which gets us all the protection we want and is way cheaper, and it's perfect. There is, it's not quite linear, there are stair steps to it, but fundamentally, more protection equals more cost.
Right, so again, I think these were really, and again, not to introduce new alternatives, but to kind of drive home the point that for a 10-year level of protection across the whole west side, the conveyance alternative is the most cost-effective alternative for achieving that, and then, as President Malinsky said, to get a higher level of protection, there is certainly a significant cost associated with that. Any questions on those? I think that's the last slide in that group. Oh, and then, I guess Melinda had looked at kind of the finances associated with that, so I'll let her talk about the slide real quick.
So, not to add any more data points, but you're getting more data points. So, on this last option that we have just discussed, what we've done then is, we ran it through the model, we worked with the financial advisor to come up with, again, what the potential costs of this could mean. One of the changes that we made from the last time that I talked to you is that we had them run 30-year debt service on the different components at 4.5% increase, because the market continues to march up as time goes on. The other thing we did is, we received from the engineers a cash flow that staggered out when these projects would be happening, because they're phased over 30 years, so the bond issuances are also staggered out over time, which is why there's a note on here that the debt service payments would conclude in 2076. A question had come up last time that we talked, when I was referring right now to interest rates, is what would be the impact as interest rates if they did increase? So, the best I can sort of give you in terms of a thumbnail is this last bullet point here. So, for every 1 million of debt that we issue, a 1% increase in the interest rate is going to add about another 230,000 to the cost. So, what does that mean when we're talking about a project right now, and the 190 million that you see? It is based on the 135 that we just talked about from the previous slide, but the engineers were also able to provide to us inflationary cost for the time as well, so that's where the 190 million comes from. So, if we take this 190 million, if we have a 1% increase, that's going to increase each year's annual debt service by about $1,700 annually, to give you some sort of idea as to what an increase in interest rates might mean for us.
Wait, I lost you there. So, 100 and, you said $1,700?
Yes. No, 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 sorry, 1,700.
Okay, I was going to say, okay. That sounds like a good offer.
Are there any questions I can answer? Great.
Okay. Back to Mr. Johnson.
And again, if there are any questions about those variations, I'm happy to answer those. The last, there were a few kind of individual questions in the last group. So, one question that obviously has come up is, how would each of the options impact the park district? And it varies. Obviously, with the sewer expansion project, with any of the conveyance projects that include a large diameter, actually a box culvert going to the stormwater pump station, there would be an easement required for installation of that box culvert across the golf course. That was looked as an alignment alternative to going down Lake Avenue because of the reduced disruption, the fact that you don't have to repave a golf course, you obviously have to put it back with special landscaping materials, but the restoration would be less expensive than going down the middle of the street. The sewer expansion option plus neighborhood storage, the hybrid, has that same need for the easement across the golf course, plus it would require space for a 10-acre-foot storage reservoir in Thornwood Park. As we've discussed before, the thinking right now is that these storage facilities would be below-grade facilities, similar to what's been done in West Park, so that after construction, the park is still available for recreational use to the community. And then, obviously, Option 3 does not require the easement for the box culvert, but would require discussions with the park district regarding storage in three different parks across the west side of Willmet. So, obviously, there is interaction with the park district required regardless of the alternative that's selected by the village board. Another question that came up from some residents at one of the last open houses, there was a concern raised about the proposed storage site in Centennial Park. And so, this is an aerial map of that northern part of Centennial Park, and you can see the prairie there along Glenview Road, and then the area bounded in the light, or in the thin red line, the green shaded area, is the footprint that was considered necessary to provide the 12 acre-feet of storage for this project, and then the heavy red line shows a conceptual alignment of the storm sewer that would bring excess water really from the Meadow and Willshire areas back towards the storage facility so it could be stored. It is, this is a tight site. Certainly, there is, if we talk about excavating a below-grade reservoir here, there would have to be a lot of considerations in terms of protecting the prairie and finding working areas. So, this is a challenging location. The footprint is adequate to hold the storage required, but again, it could be a difficult construction endeavor to get that storage in at this site. So, an alternative that was suggested and looked at was to say, could we put that same volume of storage on a portion of the community playfield? And so, this is actually, the street in the bottom part of this aerial is Meadow Drive North, and then you see the playfield there, and I believe, somebody can help me, is that Hillcrest School?
Highcrest.
Highcrest, I apologize, right there. So, we're in the area, and again, we've shown a rectangle here, the actual shape and orientation of that, there's a lot of flexibility, and so, what's important with this site, there certainly is adequate space available. One challenge with this site is, there is no public right-of-way that leads to this part of the park, so there would be an easement required to take the sewer from Meadow Drive back into the park. There is, at one location, a driveway that seems like there is some space between a couple of homes, so there is a potential where that could be constructed. But one of the most important things that came, became apparent when we looked at these sites in a little more detail, if I flip back to the other one briefly, the ground elevation in Centennial Park is about 634 feet above sea level average in that area. The low areas that we're protecting with this project in the Willshire and Meadow area are as low as 621, 622. So, the highest that we want the water in our storage to be is that level of those areas we're trying to protect. So, in this location, we would have to dig down quite a ways to then build the storage. So, you would have, the first 10 feet of excavation or more would be to get down to the area where you could actually construct the active storage. That obviously drives the cost of construction at this site up. If we look at the community playfield option, the average ground elevation here is 623. The elevation is much more consistent with the areas we're serving, so you would not have to have that deep excavation before you started creating useful storage. We've run some quick numbers, and the cost savings could be on the order of a million dollars in terms of the difference for the same volume of storage between these two sites. So, for that reason, I think it is important to say here, both sites have adequate area. The Centennial Park site is constrained, whereas the community playfield site, there's larger areas, so there may be more flexibility in perhaps how to create that storage. Centennial Park, you have concerns about proximity to the prairie. The community playfield is a recreational area, there are trees there, and so, there would be some impacts, but you don't have the large prairie area, and again, because of the space, there is more flexibility perhaps in terms of how you fit that storage in. Centennial Park, you do have access directly from the right-of-way, whereas at the playfield, you would have to get an easement. But the biggest issue again is the difference in elevation, and so, at this point, I would say that really, the playfield site is a more attractive site for this storage in that part of Willmet than the Centennial Park site. Details could be worked out as a project works into, moves into preliminary engineering and soil borings and things of that nature are done, but the elevation difference is a significant consideration that potentially impacts the cost of the project. Any questions on that one?
I just, more of a comment. I remember during the West Park construction, we were able to save quite a bit of money because they were able to, when they did the excavation, keep that soil on-site, and I think if Centennial were to be constructed, it would probably have to be moved off-site because of the prairie, and that would add to the cost, so that seems like another plus for the community playfield.
Absolutely, I think that's a fair comment.
I have another question. I have another question, and it's going to be relative to what's coming up. Okay, so, going back to that slide that showed the community playfield option where you indicated the storage area, you know, the amount of storage would be 20 acre-feet, that's how much water would be, that's the size of the...
12, 12 acre-feet, yes.
12, sorry, 12. What is the size of the space? Do you understand what I mean? how much water would be? That's the size of the...
12, 12 acre feet, yes.
12, sorry, 12. What is the size of the space? Do you understand what I'm asking? Not how deep and how much water is being retained, but the...
Footprint.
The footprint, thank you.
Right. So, it's about 75,000 square feet, a little bit less than 2 acres.
Less than 2 acres.
Right. You could, and I apologize, I should know the dimensions on this rectangle.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. And it does, again, in terms of flexibility, again, one of the issues when we look at construction projects is how easy or difficult is it to construct? Obviously, to construct a project of this nature, the contractor needs some lay-down area, needs some work area, so flexibility and some additional space allows him to be more aggressive in how he prices a project. If you give a contractor a very tight site, the challenges he's going to charge for the difficulties he has to deal with. So, there are some advantages here. So, then...
I have a question.
I'm sorry, trustee Kirk.
So, moving from Centennial to community playfields, do you anticipate that some neighborhoods would be more or less well-served?
No, sir. It would be the project in that part of West Willmet, apologize for going back through here, but it's very small on this screen, but again, it's in the lower right-hand corner of this graphic, the area kind of highlighted in green. The flooding, the areas that are flooded here that are being served are primarily the areas off Wilshire Drive and Meadow Drive, and so those sewers that we would serve those areas would still be the same. It's just that where we're taking the water that we're storing is slightly different. So, instead of the sewer running all the way across Willmet Avenue to Centennial Park and down into the park, we still have the sewer coming up from Wilshire, coming over into the Meadow Drive area, and then into the community playfield area. So, both areas would still be served, and the same volume of storage would be provided, so the benefit downstream would be the same. Does that help?
It does help. Another question is, and it could be for others in the room, are we using the prairie to its full extent for capturing rain?
I really, I can't speak to the details of that. I mean, at one point, I think that has become clear here, it is on relatively higher ground relative to the adjacent neighborhoods, and so, to the degree that rainwater from the park and from the areas around it can be captured in the prairie, that's obviously a good thing. Because of its elevation, there's not potential for water from downstream areas to be coming back into there right now. But I would defer to the Park District or others in terms of how it's functioning within that park area.
No, I mean, it's actually, it's a really good point. Commissioner Abbott from the Park District and I were talking at Go Green, and he said that's something that he thinks the Park District should consider is, are there ways that we could, the ways that they can configure or otherwise modify Park District properties so that it did a better job retaining water? So, that would sort of fall under that same sort of line of thinking, and not just the prairie, but Mallinckrodt and, you know, all of the facilities in, that the Park District, you know, manages. Is there, is there something we can do on those properties? And again, I suspect, similar to the comments about how the limitations of green infrastructure, it would help, it wouldn't solve the problem, but, you know, every little bit helps here. So, it's a, I just wanted to share that as well, given your question that I think the Park, some Park District Commissioners are thinking along the same lines.
Okay. I think there's just one or two more here. One of the other questions that had come up on a couple of occasions were, why are buyouts of vulnerable structures not reasonable? So, the question was, could we just buy the properties that are most vulnerable to flooding and would, and potentially convert that space to storage, and could we solve the problem that way? And so, first of all, and this is somewhat obvious, but, you know, what buyouts do is we eliminate the damages by eliminating the structure that's being damaged, and we do create some open space, but in and of themselves, buyouts do not dramatically reduce flood levels unless we go in and put storage in that space that's left behind. And again, when we're talking about one parcel at a time, it does require the purchase of a number of contiguous parcels to be able to get significant amounts of storage that contribute to our overall solution. But really, the most important point here, I think, that we haven't talked about much before, this chart, the letters across the bottom, if you recall on some of the early maps, we had kind of grouped study areas. We had grouped neighborhoods across West Willmet that flooded and labeled them with letters. So, the letters across the bottom here refer to those study areas and generally proceed from west to east. The blue triangles indicate the relative, the approximate elevation of each of those areas. And what you see is that there's a large number of these areas, basically all the way from Area L over to Area H, where the difference in the ground elevation is a couple of feet from, say, 621 to 623. The Willmet storm sewer system is interconnected, and so what that means, water seeks its own level. As a sewer system fills up in one area, it fills up in the other area because it's all interconnected. And so, while we could go into one particular neighborhood or study area and, say, buy half a dozen houses that flood and put storage in that area, and that would contribute to a reduction in our peak flows, because that area is basically at the same elevation as eight or nine other study areas, when those areas, when the water level comes up, that storage will be filled up and we'll still have the flooding in that area. So, unfortunately, because of the interconnected nature of West Willmet, it's very difficult to solve a problem in one area without approaching it from an area-wide perspective. We really need a solution that considers the whole west area. Does that help a little bit on that question?
Well, and plus, I mean, the other factors we were talking about previously on this, you know, depending on how many sites you want to acquire, you know, throw an, you know, and we've got, you know, somewhere on the order of, you know, 400 vulnerable structures and, you know, over 1,000 vulnerable properties. If you buy 1,000 properties and just say, assume 500,000 a property, you've spent a lot of money, a lot more money than what we're talking about, and all you got is property, you don't have any improvements on it. I mean, an order of magnitude more money.
That's correct, right. And yes, we've talked about that before, that from a cost-effective standpoint, storage is much more cost-effective when you can do it in larger, larger volumes for these larger storms. It's very expensive to do it in individual areas, and then if you have to buy the land for it as well, that adds to the cost.
Okay. I'm not totally following this, and this is something I'm really interested in, and so, it was partly why I asked the footprint size of the other property. So, it was basically 2 acres is the footprint you'd need. And so, I'm not sure I understood your analogy around, I mean, so if we were looking at, you know, an isolated area, you know, meaning, well, let's just use Kennelworth Gardens as an example, just because. So, if we were to assume that we, I was, if we, instead of putting it at Thornwood Park or whatever, if we have some homes that are significantly impacted, if we had, if we were to purchase four homes and put the storage facility there, it would, and maybe that wouldn't be two acre, maybe that wouldn't be a 2-acre footprint, but depending on where it was, if they were, I don't know, a quarter or a third acre lots, you would get close to an acre to 2 acres of space. And why wouldn't that solution work? And especially when you look at, and the reason why I'm very interested in Kennelworth Gardens is when you look at the cost to implement neighborhood storage in Kennelworth Gardens, related to the other question I'd asked around the number of properties.
Right.
I think it's a very important question to ask because the cost for the number of homes is quite significant.
No, that's a fair question. I think, to your point about the storage, the challenge is, with the storage projects, in general, we have to have, we have to get the water to the storage. So, you're right, if we were to say, okay, let's go to the low spot, the lowest spot on a street in Kennelworth Gardens, and buy up enough homes to put that storage in, it is, it's a feasible alternative. You could certainly do that. And then, I think the question becomes, does the cost to acquire those properties, is that offset by a savings in the conveyance, right? Because what you, you still have to have pipes. In Kennelworth Gardens, as is true in most of these areas, there's not just one low area that floods, there tend to be parallel streets or a couple of streets next to each other. So, the homes that flood are not necessarily all right in one area. So, we still have to have some pipes to drain the other low spots and get that into the storage. And so, you would be paying more to acquire the land and remove those homes, but you might have some savings in the conveyance, so there could be a wash there. The real question is, if you remove the homes that are damaged, does that, is the cost benefit, you know, why are we doing the project to begin with, right? If you've already removed the homes that are most damaged, do we still need to do a project altogether?
That would be the second question you could ask. So, if you remove the homes that are most damaged and were able to put something in, like a green infrastructure in there, and those homes were isolated to two or three areas, and you only had to purchase two homes in each of those areas, which is six homes, I mean, I'm just asking.
We did the math, though, on it, and it's not two homes or six homes, it's 20 homes, you know? And so, because if you think about it, let's just pick a number like a half million dollars because it's a round number, and there's 400 vulnerable structures that are in the math here. That's $200 million. And if you look at all thousand, that's $500 million. And that's assuming it's 500,000 a site, including site work, demolition, and everything else. So, the numbers just get staggeringly large when you think about the value of the land.
But you're looking at that, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
Let's just buy the homes and do that. I mean, not even talking about the future or what we're losing and giving up is our reduction of inventory stock and homes.
We went, we went through this, we went through this, like on Meadow, because if you look at Meadow, for example, and you can tell by the Centennial math, Meadow is a good, like, 11 feet lower than Glenview Road. I mean, it's a big drop-off. So, why couldn't you just buy all of those homes and turn that all into big storage? The land acquisition cost, basically, you were at the cost of the project just after buying the land in a lot of these examples. And so, in Kennelworth Gardens, let's just say you had to buy 10 or 12 homes to get a mass, you know, those homes are probably 750 each. You do 12 times 750, you're at the cost of the project already, and you haven't done anything other than buy the houses. You haven't knocked them down, you haven't, you know, landscaped or anything like that. This was, we did go down this path, you know, because it was, frankly, trustee Dodd, it was one of my questions, why can't we do it this way? So...
No, I think that's a fair assessment.
I mean, we can, and if you want more math on it, we can certainly have them present it. But that was the big thing. It's like, by the time you bought the land, you were in for the amount of the project without having done the project. So...
And then, I think the last question that had come up, there was a question asked about the value of coordinated infrastructure improvements, and the question really stemmed from the fact that, again, if we're doing projects where we're replacing infrastructure storm sewers in several miles of streets, doesn't it make sense to do other infrastructure improvements along with that, and isn't there a cost savings? And the answer is certainly yes. I mean, if we, this is just a hypothetical cross-section, but under a typical street in West Willmet, you've got a storm sewer, you've got a sanitary sewer, you've got a water main that are all owned by the village, that are in various ages in terms of their various points in their life cycle. If you're doing work on the storm sewer, you're going to disrupt a large part of that area. It certainly would make sense, if you've got aging sanitary sewer, water main in that area, to look at that and make decisions about where to, where to make those improvements. Ballpark, depending on the layout of the street, could save 5% to 15% over the cost of doing those three projects independently, plus it certainly saves the embarrassment to the engineers of coming back and tearing up a street that's just been repaved a few years before. So, it's a smart way to approach things. I guess one point I did want to make sure people understood is, in the costs that were developed for the alternatives already, there's a significant amount of water main and sewer replacement included. So, as the Burke team did their original costs and we reviewed them, they looked at streets and said, gosh, if we're putting a 96-inch sewer down that street, chances are, we're going to have to replace the water main in that street. So, these just give some numbers for the sewer expansion alternative. About 25% of the streets were assumed to include water main and sanitary sewer replacement. So, some of that cost savings is already cooked into the numbers, if you will. Certainly, as the village were to go forward, I'm sure that Bridget Staff would want to look at individual streets and kind of make appropriate decisions, and certainly if there is aging water main or aging sanitary sewer, that could be rolled into those projects to accomplish that cost savings.
About what percent of the infrastructure is that? I mean, I don't, do we have, do we have 129,000, is it 10%? Do we have 129,000 feet of water main, do you know?
They have 100 miles across the village, so it needs 60 miles. It's a small...
Okay. And again, our experience has been in other communities that when you, certainly, if you're doing a 12-inch storm sewer down a street or 15-inch storm sewer, chances are you can protect the other utilities, you don't have any impact on them. You start talking about 84, 96, 108-inch sewer, there's a very high likelihood that the other pipe infrastructure in that street is going to, is going to be impacted and need to be replaced anyway. And so, that's kind of the basis that went into these original numbers.
So, you mean impacted, moved? Like, you know, you're putting a big pipe in, you might have to move the little pipe, or...
Well, either that, or it may just be if you expose it. When you put in an 8-foot diameter sewer, you have a trench that may be 16, 17 feet wide. So, if the water main happens to fall within that trench, it's, if the water main is old, it's very difficult to hold that water main in place while you do the other work. Typically, what happens is you take it out of service, you replace it with new water main while it's exposed. In some places, it may be a direct conflict where you have to move it. So, it just kind of varies. But it was, it was a good question that someone raised, and again, I think the point is that I'm confident that the engineers and village staff, as they go forward, would look to make sure that we're being effective in how we're replacing existing infrastructure in conjunction with doing this other work. I think that's, those were the questions that I had to answer. Yes?
So, when you said that, when the Burke team already did the numbers, so, do your estimates to include the fact that if you are ripping up these streets, not only because you want to replace the water main as a benefit, that you might in fact have to replace the water main? And is that, are those costs in your numbers already?
Yes. So, the quantities, the way we approached it, we looked at the, they, in their tables, they had determined the quantity, how many feet of water main and sewer they expected to need to replace. We did an independent review of that and said, do we think that's reasonable? And again, we haven't looked at all the utilities, but the feeling was that, yes, it was a reasonable amount. It was, as I said here, it's on the order of 25% of the total project. That's a lot of water main and sewer to be included, and so we felt that that was reasonable. We then applied our prices to that that may have been slightly different than theirs, but the quantities, we believe, are accurate.
But again, that's, it's a significant amount, but it's not automatically replacing everything everywhere when you can't.
That is, that is correct. And that certainly goes to, you know, I think the village, again, would want to look and say, what is the annual commitment to water main replacement, sewer replacement, and can we coordinate that work, as I'm sure they already do with other things, and we make smart decisions here.
Right. So, you may, what you're saying is, okay, if we were planning to replace 1% of the water mains, well, we would replace the 1% that, where the ground's being dug up as opposed to picking a different 1% in that particular year.
And you might be able to do 1, you know, 1.5% because you're saving some money doing that.
Okay.
Those were the questions that have been raised. I hope that's helpful. I'm certainly available here to answer other questions or to follow up on any of these if there are any other questions.
Questions for Mr. Johnson?
Very well done.
Okay, very helpful. Just as a reminder to folks, the plan right now is that we're going to have a special committee of the whole on April 17th to sort of discuss and debate which route we'd like to head down. That first decision for the board will set up a, basically, a plan for engineering design. We're a good distance away from, you know, breaking ground and anything. So, the next step, which hopefully on April 17th, this board reaches a consensus on, is like, this is the direction we'd like to go, and then at a subsequent meeting after an RFP and the like, the engineering team would present a contract for engineering services for that. I will open it up to public comment, if anyone would like to address the board.
Mr. President, will we have a chance to discuss, or is that come after the public comment, or...
What would you like to discuss tonight?
Well, I would like to at least make a statement, or just share a thought.
I give you the floor.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to express some concern about phasing. I appreciate the intellectual curiosity that goes into wanting to explore that. I think it's consistent with the very thoughtful process this board has taken, but as a practical matter, I have great concerns about taking a project that brings just 10-year flood protection to residents who have been struggling with this for quite some time and stretching it out in very long periods of time, to like 2027, 2037. This is repeat information for most people in... This is repeat information for most people in the room, but perhaps in TV land. You know, these measurements, 10-year flood protection or otherwise, are from data that was analyzed between the years 1900 and 1983. And so I think we're clear that climate change is upon us, and that what we are experiencing is much more significant. And so the prospect to me, this is just my personal opinion, that the prospect that we are on a track to provide 10-year flood protection to residents of West Willmet by the year 2037, based on data from 1980s, that's not showing enough urgency in my mind. And so I definitely appreciate the information. We should grapple with it, but those are my concerns, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Yeah, no, and I expect that will be a hearty portion of the April 17th meeting, you know, sort of how much money to spend, and how fast to spend it, and which project to do.
That is a 50, 60-year gap. So, thank you.
Okay, so, public comment, who would like to be heard? One, two, three, four, five, six? Okay, we'll start right there in the front. We'll go left side, right, right side, left side, my right, left.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Roberts, 720 La Crosse Avenue. And first thing, thank you for your continuing deliberations. As I commented, I think, two meetings ago, I go around my neighborhood, I'm in K1 in that area, and the last time I went around, I mean, people could hardly believe that actually this was going to come to a vote. People would say things like, it's been 30 years that I've been waiting for this, and actually had trouble believing. And I kept saying to them, look, I've been at the board meetings, that the board's very serious, and they really are moving towards making a decision. So, thank you, there's a sense, I think, out there that there's a possibility of a solution here. The other thing that I'm actually throwing a question back to you, I've heard about some people that are suggesting that this ought to be a community-wide referendum, that it's not the village board that should be deciding, and I don't know how you're going to handle that in terms of public information, and exactly how that stands. Are we really talking about for sure this is a village board prerogative, or is there a possibility that somebody would call for a referendum and force us into that kind of a situation?
So, from a legal point of view, the board has the authority?
So from a legal point of view, the board can pass an ordinance or a resolution putting a referendum, an advisory referendum on the ballot.
The board also has the authority to authorize the spending without a referendum.
That is correct. So without a referendum, the board has the authority to spend, to authorize bonds, essentially, in any amount needed, and proceed that way. As far as a referendum is concerned, again, this board can decide it, and there's other methods of which to get it on the ballot, but I don't believe that's been.
No, I mean, but the board, a referendum can be citizen-driven. If you get a sufficient number of petition signatures, there can be an advisory referendum on the ballot, much like what happened in Winnetka, where there was a citizen-driven referendum that went on the ballot. So this board hasn't discussed, I don't believe we've discussed a referendum on this, but it will certainly be discussed on the 17th, I suspect.
And it is important to note that any referendum would be advisory, not binding, by either the village board or by the.
Ultimately, the village board's decision to make, either by deciding April 17, or taking the advice of the community, but still making the decision.
Right, and again, the decision on April 17th is a path to go down such that we don't waste engineering money.
Right.
We are quite a distance from, you know, letting contracts and the like, you know, a lot of work to be done.
Well, that's a helpful clarification, thank you.
Okay. Ms. McAllister?
Hi, Carley McAllister, Willshire Drive.
You obviously thought it was going to be a shorter meeting, you didn't take off your coat, you were like, ready to go.
It's been a long week. So, just a couple final comments, in terms of delaying a decision, going to more rounds, just a quick summary, because I know Julie Wolf and I have seen each other at many meetings, but for those who are new to this, this is, you know, we have gone through the 2009 MWH study, which surprisingly came up with many of the same options, and even some of the same cost estimates as we're debating, so that's nine years ago. And we had flow metering, people think engineers just pulled these numbers out of a hat, but that was an extensive project. We had the 160-some pages, 10 people per page, who responded to the after 2013 flooding and analysis of that, and that worked into the engineering model. So they were confident that the models that they've put together, you know, that StanTech has put together to make this advice, is based on reality. And we had the 2015 study, and that tonight referenced some of the green infrastructure ideas, so, and we have StanTech's value added. So I think to speak to Denny's point about people wondering if anything would ever be done, you can see where they would get the idea, maybe that it's not going to happen. So I do appreciate everything that's being done, and I hope something does happen. I feel like we have many models, even right in our own community, that we should feel confident that we're going to be able to do the right thing. On the east side, there were flooding issues, there's a new relief storm trunk, there's some backup systems that MWRD helped fund, and now sections have been added, and there's also green infrastructure projects, like the Green Alleyways. That's just a great model for the west side. A 10-year storm standard, same as on the east side, a storm trunk adding on to that and developing green infrastructure. Tonight, we heard a lot of ways that either the green infrastructure can be incorporated as much as possible, increasing service, or you can have efficiencies by installing with road construction or water main replacement. So we've got that model there. I was at the Go Green Willmet, or Go Green Illinois, meeting today, and communities talked about things they're doing, like Highland Park doubled the size of their storm sewers, and started investigating how green infrastructure can add into that. So I'm still a fan of keep it simple, option one creates a 10-year standard across the whole village, then add the new, you know, there's so much green infrastructure being developed, you could build increased service on to that, rather than, it was kind of shocking to see 135 million, 25-year storm thing being debated, when it didn't seem like there was yet a full commitment to even 10-year across the whole village. And so I feel like it should be.
That was my request, that they did that analysis, and so.
Wanted to go, go big or go home. So, I mean, there's definitely people who would, I guess, argue for 135 million, but it seems to me, what I hear over and over from engineers and from a lot of people working on green infrastructure, is keep it simple, keep building on, you know, the main components that you've got. We've got a pump station, we've got an outflow, start with that, and just, you know, trust that in the design process, we can accomplish a lot of these other savings, or so on, so. And I also feel like this, one thing I've discovered in just listening to people, is there's so much emotional connection to that prairie area. A lot of scouts and volunteers have put a lot of time into that, so I'm sure you're hearing about that. Anyway, I would just say, keep it simple, keep focused on the original goal, which was 10-year storm protection across the entire village. So, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Beth Drucker, 2500 Greenwood, just as a private citizen. I, when he was talking about rebuild, all the street construction, today, the Go Green Illinois meeting, we had experts from Center for Neighborhood Technology, the Delta Institute, Northwestern University, and we finished up with Jim Patchett from Conservation Design Forum, and he talked a lot about road construction. It's a massive amount of our village, and what I didn't hear was whether or not these, after you've ripped up all the roads, and you've put in the pipes and the mains that have to get replaced, are we going to then backfill, put the clay back in, and surface it with a non-permeable surfacing? Or is there an idea of putting back permeable materials underneath the roads to collect some of the water, and then having a permeable paving surface? Is that something that's being talked about?
Yeah, we talked about it in this meeting, you may have missed it, but.
At this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, so is that something that you think will be done?
It's on the table, it's part of the decision.
It's kind of what Kennelworth has done in substantial parts of their village, where they've replaced Fullwood Street with permeable pavement for street, and as was discussed, we're all anxious to see how that performs over several winters and several freeze-thaw cycles, because, and Joe can correct me, and Bridget, but my recollection, when they first started doing the work, is it has not been used extensively this far north in this type of climate. It's been used more extensively around Atlanta and other cities. So this, there's something of a, we kind of, we want to see how it's performing, so it's not, it certainly would be considered, and I think all of us around here are very anxious to see how Kennelworth does with it, and that's kind of the same thing we've done with the Green Alley, is those have been funded as demonstration projects, so we can evaluate their, whether they're going to last as well as a regular street, and.
Then one other thing I'd like to mention is, when you get requests for paving permits, example is the Panera lot, which was just repaved in the last couple of years, completely solid, non-permeable surfacing, those, we may have opportunities to rethink that and have parking lots more like at the library, which I think has been really successful for them.
I just wanted to mention one other thing about permeable paving. One thing we discussed in our municipal services committee meeting, there are some permeable pavers that have very much the look of the historic bricks, and there are some projects that have been done with those, so that's one thing we've discussed, and that would be another way of approaching permeable paving.
Yeah.
It just addresses huge areas, far bigger than bioswales or rain gardens will ever address.
And in the parking lots where we think it's feasible, we're going to be looking at that, too. Sometimes there's a price component to it, in the case of the lot across the street, the center part that is repaved, you'll see examples of permeable lots where the center lanes, where you will expect truck traffic from time to time, will be conventional pavement, and then the parking areas are paved in the permeable. The library has the advantage of the alley, so there's no heavy truck traffic in the lot at all.
Right.
So at some point, when it comes to having to repave the Village Hall lot, for example, we'll try to price that out as an alternative, and see what designs we can get.
Great, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone, I'm Martha Helander, I live at 2517 Thornwood, and I'm an organic gardener. My garden was on the Alternative Gardens tours a couple of years ago, some of you may have stopped by. I'm very concerned about the environmental issues of this project, and I recently found out, I've lived in Willmet for 25 years, I recently learned that 10 years ago, the village passed an ordinance to create, and I'm going to read, a Willmet Environmental and Energy Commission, known as the EEC.
That's right.
And I didn't know we had that. I guess it's an advisory commission, and it has members, and I would just.
Would you like to be one?
Pardon?
Would you like to be one?
I would.
Well, fill out a Talent Bank questionnaire, and we'll have coffee, and we'll talk about it.
Okay, and we can talk over the back fence, if you like, I'm your neighbor.
Okay.
My request is simply, first of all, it's, I'm impressed by all the work that you're doing. This is a complicated thing, and oh my God, the issues you have to consider are huge. But what I would like to see is this EEC be activated, and to do what it was, I believe, supposed to do, which was to contribute, you know, get consultants, or find out answers to questions, perhaps, that the board could use more information on. And we've been hearing about the Go Green Illinois meeting, at which some very notable experts statewide, and maybe even nationally-known experts on, you know, green solutions to some of these same problems spoke, and it might be interesting to consult with somebody like that, just to see if some of these questions that remain could be addressed using current information, and see what else has been done. So, and this, I did see, or hear a statement that clay soil can't store water. That's not true. Once you plant prairie plants, they love clay soil, the roots go very, very deep, 20, 30 feet deep, and, you know, that was what was here before. So I think it depends on what you plant. Anyway, that was my statement.
But I'm also serious about, if you're interested, Talent Bank questionnaire on the Willmet Village website.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're done on this side, this side. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. My name's Joe Lunkus, and I'm a resident of Willmet, 811 Park Avenue. I've lived here for 33 years. So I have memories of the east side before we got relief with the combined sanitary and storm system, and the burbing that was put in place, flow controls, and the drop to the deep tunnel. And I appreciate that, because it was very, very messy. So I have empathy for people, residents of the west side, who have flooding. However, you know, having several brothers who are engineers, their whole training is to fix the problem. And in looking at this alternative review, alternative performance sheet, clearly it fixes the problem. There's no water under, basically, two to three of the four scenarios after a 10-year rainfall event. So what we're designing here is to whisk the water off the streets and move it away, so that we don't have to walk in a puddle, two inches, three inches of water, in most of these cases. Now, I don't need to point out that the whole design on the east side is to capture the water in the streets, in the parkways, up over the sidewalks, and allow it to be slowly discharged to eliminate flooding in the streets. So my first point is, is I think it's a very comprehensive solution, and the engineers might be responding to what they were asked to do, come forward with a great solution. I think you've heard from some of the other members of the audience here, that there might be more green solutions, and I would argue that not, the streets are not all level, as the one slide showed, and water runs down to the lower streets, and these five neighborhood maximum depth indicators here are exactly that, maximum depth. Not all the streets are flooded to a foot and a half, or 2.3 in the case of the Thielen Coliseum.
Those are, those particular sites were chosen because they are among the worst.
Right, right. And so what I'm suggesting is, is one could put in regulators, street berms, so that the water running down the street for three blocks doesn't end up in Thielen Court like that. A more slower progression of the movement of the water to the lowest spot in the neighborhood. And so I just think that we have a perfect solution here to provide no inconvenience in a 10-year storm at the cost of $90 million to the residents, and I would ask the board to reconsider that. Again, there's 311 homes that are affected, and I was asking, about 1,263 properties that are affected. So I was asking the engineers, what does threatened mean? What's a property? What's a structure? A property that's threatened is where the water comes up over the curb, gets on to the property. That happens in the east, as you know. A structure that's threatened is where the water gets up and starts to approach the home. And I asked how many of these homes get flooded, and we don't have any, we have anecdotal feedback from the stores, that we don't have a hard statistical, nor has the village engineers gone into the homes to see if there's more remedial efforts that could be made to fortify that home against flooding, as opposed to spending $90 million to protect 313 homes. There's also five areas that we're focusing on, you know, it's kind of a comprehensive plan, let's fix it for everyone. I would be very interested to see with the distribution of the affected properties, as well as the 313 homes among those five areas, because my gut tells me that most of them are going to be to the west in one area, and that perhaps Kennelworth. area, and that perhaps Kennelworth Garden, there's not as many, you know, a handful of threatened homes. And again, maybe we could look at the situation and find more remedial ways. So, moving on, is how do you pay for this project? It's just as an aside, you know, as residents, we're charged for our water consumption. We're charged for sewer based upon our water consumption. I think that that's not a perfect system. I understand why you do it. It's simple. But in some of the homes on larger properties, their water consumption is undoubtedly higher in the summertime, when they're watering their gardens. That water's never going down into the basement. There's certainly homes in Willmet, I'm an empty nester now, but I had children growing up, where there might be three or four teenagers taking a lot of showers. And that's adding to their sewer and their sewer bill. So, indexing this to the sewer bill doesn't seem to be an equitable solution. I know you're looking at alternatives at impervious coverage areas, which I think is a swell idea, because part of the issue might be just the overbuilding of lots in Kennelworth Garden and other areas. I've been here long enough to see all the development going on. And I think it's kind of ironic, because another thing on your agenda today is to subdivide a lot at Chestnut and 12th Street, one of the epicenters of flooding, according to the maps. And, you know, we'll add two houses to where one house is. I understand that legally, that could be subdivided under the platypus survey, but I find the irony-
You have really done your homework tonight, I have to tell you.
I find it ironic.
I'm very impressed.
But going back to the, to the paying for it, I think the most equitable way, because none of us really contribute to the flooding by flushing our toilets, I think the most equitable way is to just add up the number of homeowner units, apartments, and spread the bill evenly by residents, because in the end, we don't suffer on the east side. I live over on Park Avenue. When it floods over on, you know, Locust Court, but I'm, you know, willing, as a member of the community, to kind of pay my fair share. But I think the, you know, the method of going and tagging it on to the super sewer bill based upon water consumption is not appropriate. So, in summary, it's a Cadillac solution to a problem. I think there might be more cost-effective solutions. It was interesting, three inches if you put in the swales, nine inches if you put in the permeable streets. And we're up to nine inches now, I'm sorry, six inches and three inches. It's, we're up to nine inches out of a, on most of these. That eliminates half the flooding in the most depressed areas. And if you expanded it out and put some burms in to kind of hold the flow downhill a little bit, you might have a solution that's, you know, a little bit more elegant from an environmental standpoint, more cost-effective. And so, you know, I think we've had this problem for a long time. The board's been trying to address it. And I understand the frustration, hey, let's get something going. But on the other hand, I think this Cadillac solution is awfully expensive. And I think a lot of the beneficiaries of it will be surprised when they have to live through years of construction, street closures, you know, Lake Street, if you go with a full option, being dug up, that you'll have a lot of residents waking up and saying, what did we just bring upon ourselves? So, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service, and look forward to following the deliberations.
Thank you, sir. This is the last one?
Last, but not least.
I did not say least.
My name's Tom Scanlon, and been in Willmet about a little more than 40 years. And a couple of observations from earlier, the discussions that, on the permeable, you guys-
Oh, one of the residents asked your address.
Oh, 10th and Chestnut. The permeable pavement is, Tim, is the park district's new beach parking lot? They were considering that?
I don't know.
Okay, why don't you look into that? Because that's a good test, since that's going to be built within the next year. So, I'm talking about Gilson Park. So, that's, they were considering that, but I'm not sure if they finalized it, which is interesting, that will be, you asked, you know, about testing, and that might be one of the options. So, anyway, I attended the open house, and been looking at your website and your brochure, and trying, and learning about what's going on. And the other discussion we had earlier was about the purchasing homes. And some of this you probably already know, but two years ago, in Glenview, FEMA and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District initiated a pilot program where they did purchase 17 homes, and that had continuous flooding. These houses were torn down, and the open space were turned into parks. Now, I know some of the people whose houses were torn down, and their definition of flooding was you could scuba dive in their basement. Okay? So, that was the, what they did. And I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but now, I wanted to inform you about that, especially because the Water Reclamation District and FEMA paid for part of it, not just Glenview. Okay? So, they did get fees, and where you're talking about, Bob, the whole thing, they did get, and I'm not sure what the percentage of the fees were. You know, there are just so many issues that contribute to the flooding. And one of the things that I want to remind you about is, if I, when I talk to board members from the, you know, the 70s and 80s, they recall the houses that were being built, the McMansions, that was, that was a, the quote back then, all the McMansions that were being added on. And many of the environmentalists predicted that this would happen in the board meetings. And if you talk to Jacoby, or McHugh, or some of those guys, they will tell you, yeah, we were told that this could happen someday, and that they continued to approve it all. Anyway, that was, when today, when I was at the open house, and I was talking with Melinda, and the observations that I've had on your website and your brochure, and it's just the transparency, I think that I would like you to clear up. I've talked to many, many, many residents and asked them if they're familiar with the word impervious service fees. And that's, not one person has understood it. And so, I explained it to them, and it's the, you know, which is your proposed stormwater plans. And so, I want you to be aware of that, that you're going to have to be a little more transparent on that. You know, and if you're not sure what this is, I was explaining-
Well, we, you know, to your point, we've got a lot of work to do in that area.
I know, that's secondary.
We haven't really talked about that yet, about how it's going to be paid for. But I appreciate the comment. We throw around words like impervious surface, like everybody knows what that means, right? Yeah.
No one knows, right. So, I did, you know, I do know about that, because I have a good, a good long-term relationship in St. Louis. So, review the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District details that were imposed to St. Louis residents in 2015. And I think that was close to a billion-dollar sewer project. And for those who do not, you know, know what, you know, I explained it. They say, basically, the taxes or the fees in St. Louis are based on the footprint of the home, which they calculated by satellites. And so, and if you know St. Louis, this is interesting, picture Ladue, and Ladue is like the Winneka of St. Louis. And then picture Ladue having houses that are from the 1900s that have not expanded, and they, they're still the same original house with maybe 40% of the property, the home, and 60% being the land. And then you look at Webster Groves, and more like Willmet, and where they did a lot of the McMansions, where they have houses that are 80% of the land, or 75% of land in the, of the property, and 20% is the open grass space. Well, in St. Louis, those houses on the impervious pay more than the houses in, you know, where they have mostly land, in Ladue. So, and I know that Winneka and a lot of these other places have done that. So, I just wanted to let you know that there's some, there's some good examples of that, especially St. Louis and what they've done. And there's lots of articles in the, on the internet about the impervious service fees, because I think that's the fairest and most, you know, it's difficult, like Joe was talking about, it's difficult to do all these taxes. But that's one that is been, and they did the court challenges there, and it's all gone over and passed by the, by the city of St. Louis. And Austin, Austin's the other one. And that's, appreciate all your help on this, and you're, and you're working on this difficult issue. And I just wanted to let you know that the transparency is important, that a lot of people don't understand what's going on with the, and that's why I brought up the impervious.
With regards to, yeah, well, we haven't really debated that yet, so that would make sense.
But it is on your website. It is on your brochure.
Yeah, it's an option.
I know. So, and that, and people are just, you know, so you might as well extrapolate. Okay?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Could you just have an engineer respond? Because I know, like, people study keeping water on the streets already on the west side.
We've had a pilot. Bridgette, you want to-
If you paid for a round of studies, Julie remembers this, right? Finally, just keeping the water on the street, I think that would help.
She's in the space, she should come in. It's all right. I'm not going to.
Good evening. I believe the study that Ms. McAllister is referring to is probably a decade ago. We looked at one of the streets bordering the Edens, and forgive me, I don't remember which one, but it was the, a pilot to look at the concept similar to the east side, where we would create on-street detention by restricting inlets and creating burms. And what the design engineer determined at the time, and it never actually was constructed, is for the very reason we're here today talking about street flooding, is because the storm sewers were already so self-restricting, and the streets were already flooding, that it was counterintuitive to create more surface detention and exacerbate the problem. So, it ended, and it never got beyond that point.
Well, and the benefit, the benefit on the east side of the burms is to keep the water out of basements. As a, it's not, it's not an overland solution. It's a basement backup solution, less water in the pipes, so less water to get to the, into the basements.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, anything else on anyone's mind? Okay, so, that's it from Municipal Services then. Trustee Kersman, Public Safety?
No report.
Judiciary Trustee Plunkett?
All items on consent.
We have, I should make sure I'm on the right item. We have no reports from our special committees, item 67. No additional new business to discuss, item 7. And there's no actions to take with regards to item 8, pending matters referred to standing committees. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.